Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, February 18th at 6:02 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here.
All members are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you've not already done so, please silence, either mute or turn off your cell phones, and then if you are able, please stand and join us for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We did have a closed session before and after our last regularly scheduled meeting. Two matters. One was the basically discussion on terms and conditions on the fairgrounds, potential fairgrounds acquisition by the city from the county, and the other was a personnel matter regarding evaluation regarding the city manager. On both points, there's no reportable action at this time. We will now move on to oral communication. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act, however, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the council. I'll start with speaker cards first, and then if there's anyone else who hasn't had the chance to fill one out, we'll go from there. First card I have is from Alex. Alex, should you so choose, but you are not required to do so, share with us your name and your address.
I will. Alex Kellinger, 11 Terrace Drive. I've already emailed the council on this a couple times, real annoyingly, I'm sure. We don't have mandatory garbage pickup in this town, and it is, I guess it may not be a problem to some people, but for some of us it is. If you live next to a Don Zelv years ago, or another guy who's getting a little old and doesn't quite see the urgency of it, and throw the other bag in the garage, and wait till you get a pickup truck full, and whatever. So anyway, it's something that I'd like to see us get. It's an eye roller. I move around the North Bay all day, and it's an eye roller when people hear that we don't have mandatory trash pickup. It can be a rodent problem. As I said, that's what really spurred it on to me. We have cats, yet we still see rodents around. We do have chickens in town. We're allowed to have chickens, which is great, and if you read up on that, it's a real diligence about maintaining your property, or you'll have rodents. So it kind of becomes twofold for us. And I'm just asking, look, don't be an enabler for an old guy. I may be an old guy without a wife one day, too, and, huh, throw it in the garage, I'll get it next week. And it's a reality. So I'm asking, I won't keep annoying the council with letters, and I did have one other interesting thought. My wife and I left California in 93, and we lived on a dirt road in the Appalachians, and I recall we had mandatory pickup garbage. So we're very unique. I've heard that for many years, living here 23 years, but I don't want to be unique there. Thank you for your time.
Alex, thank you. Your letters are not annoying. We appreciate feedback from anyone. I do sit and represent the city on the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, where there are some communities in the county that have mandatory and some that don't. What I can assure you, what I can assure you is that there are pros and cons, and I will happily bring back for the community's consideration what would be involved there. But I'm not opposed to it. We'll bring you the pros, cons, and we go from there. All right?
If memory serves me correctly, I think when Karen Slusser served on that board, that we moved away from mandatory trash pickup at one.
We used to have it. It used to be mandatory, right?
It used to be, and then...
...in 2020 in a city, okay?
Understood. You've spoken. Thank you very much. I will be happy to share them with you. Thank you, Alex.
Just as a little history for everybody, we did have it, and then there were some reasons that were compelling for the council to, when we adjusted the contract with Upper Valley, that we dropped that requirement. So I'm certainly willing to reexamine it.
Okay, I will bring that back. I have, I believe, Brian, is this for later? Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item or a consent calendar item? With that being said, I will close oral communication. Entertain a motion for this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on, council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Yes, it's related to the gentleman that just spoke. Now that the weather is more nice and, you know, warm, people start cleaning their homes, including myself, and it's very easy for us just to dump things on the street and write a note saying it's for free. So I think, you know, it's good to do that at a certain point, but I think it's about time for us to enforce penalties for these acts, because the city needs to look nice and clean, and not only for people out of town, not only for the tourists or for the visitors, but also for our own community, especially for our childrens. We need to set a sample for them, so I will request the city manager to start looking in something that we can do to enforce penalties for people who do that. And also, I wonder if it will be possible to get on the agenda for March 17, a presentation about vaping products with the family center. Regina Penna is the program coordinator for this program at the family center, and I met with her, and we discussed about this issue. Santilina is already working in this, and I think it's very important that us as a council, we discuss about this problem, especially again for the safety of our kids. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams?
I have two items, Mr. Mayor. One, I want to thank Mr. Kern and City Clerk Kendall for, on the staff reports, city manager Kern and I have talked a couple of times about the format for the staff reports, and we see them all the time, and we get used to them, but you'll notice on the staff reports tonight that the subject line in almost every case and almost every item is only two or three or four words, and this, I think, is helpful for the general public trying to understand what's going on here on these topics. And sometimes in the past, the subject line was identical with the description, and these were long and wordy kind of things. And so it's a small matter, but I think anything that makes the agendas and the staff reports more accessible to the public, I think, is a step in the right direction, so I appreciate the movement in that way. The second item I'd like to only mention is, I'd be interested in my colleagues' opinions, thoughts on term limits here in our government, our local government, and so I don't ask for any staff work on that, but I'd like that to be on the agenda, and it's not an agenda item now, but I'd be interested in hearing what your ideas are on that. So if we could get that on the agenda at the next opportunity, I would appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, a couple of meetings ago, I brought up an issue about publicizing the amounts of money and the people who are asking and making exorbitant public record requests. And what I would like to do is see if the city staff would bring back something for the council to discuss and decide whether we're going to adopt that policy.
Thank you very much. Staff, you're clear on that? Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. I was going to, a word that Councilmember Williams used relative to the staff reports is accessibility. I'd like to remind the community that all of our documents, all of our minutes, video recordings, et cetera, of meetings are all available to every single Calistogan or anyone who has access to the Internet at any and all times on our website. All of our reports are there. It's easy to access. You can also sign up for automatic reminders and postings. There is nothing to hide here, folks. It's all right there, so don't act surprised. It is also our responsibility as a city to inform the public, but you as the public and as a voter are responsible for also helping to inform yourselves as to what's going on in your community under which we bid service for you. So with that said, we will now move on to proclamations, presentations, and awards. Oh, I'm sorry, we skipped right after the, right over the city manager. City manager reports, city manager Kern, my apologies.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Mike Kern, city manager. Some quick items. Yesterday, representatives from the company that's going to be putting in the sirens came into town unbeknownst to us and made some pavement markings where they thought the sirens were supposed to go. Unfortunately, they were using some old antiquated data that was in error. The two areas in question, one is on, off of Cedar, near Rancho D, and the other is off of Grant, near Mora. The one near Mora is probably the closest to where the final landing will be, but your council has provided direction to staff that there'll be three sirens, one at the Public Works Corp. Yard, one at or near the Logby Pool, and one on Grant at or near Greenwood. So I want to make it clear to the community that those are the three locations that the council has approved, and the oversight on the installation company was in error, and I want to apologize for anybody that got upset over that. Now, this evening, one of our contractors will be starting night work on Foothill Boulevard to do an emergency repair on a water line. Your council approved that contract at the last meeting, and it's taken a little bit for them to get their parts ready. All the work will be done at night because of the impacts to traffic during the day. The work is scheduled to be completed by next Thursday. So if you're traveling in that area on Foothill between Elm and Spring, please pay attention to the traffic control signage and anybody that might be out there directing traffic. A reminder, March 18th is the mayor's forum. We'll be focusing on topics that are important to our Hispanic community. That'll be at 6 o'clock here. And then lastly, our March 3rd council meeting will be canceled because the community center will be used as a voting center. I'd like to encourage anybody that's eligible to vote to get out and exercise your civic responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to proclamations, presentations, and awards. First, we'll actually, I'm just going to hand the whole thing over to Chief Salaya. Looks like all three points are yours. Item number one, dispatcher and officer of the year awards. That will be followed by, well, we'll start with that one.
That's a good start.
Chief, welcome back.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, city council members, city manager, and city clerk, thank you for having me this evening. I have the honor of making a couple announcements. The first one is our 2019 Officer of the Year and Dispatcher of the Year. Unfortunately, our dispatcher of the year had another engagement. Her son had a basketball game. I think they're in some sort of finals or something, so we wish them the best of luck on that. But if I could have Officer Ryan Jung step up this way. As I speak about Officer, Dispatcher Griselda Loza, she's our dispatcher of the year this year. Griselda is a 14-year veteran dispatcher, and you've heard me talk about the dispatchers a number of times up here, and what a critical role that they play. I mean, they're literally the face and the voice of the police department. If you call for assistance, 911 or business lines, they're the ones that are going to pick up. If you go to the front counter, they're the ones that are going to greet you. So they literally are the face and the voice of the police department and do an outstanding job for us. And Griselda has, stepped up and actually set herself aside from other dispatchers last year and was awarded Dispatcher of the Year. This is an award that comes from her peers, along with input from me. A number of things were said about Griselda. One about professionalism, her assistance of helping officers. She's been crucial in some of the investigations that we've had this year, which led to her being subpoenaed by the DA's office. She wasn't too thrilled about that, but hey, that goes with the job. So I just want to congratulate Griselda, and we have a nice plaque for her, but again, she knows where her priorities are, and she's at a basketball game cheering her son on. The Officer of the Year is Ryan Jung, who is behind me. Ryan is a three-year veteran, and in his short three years, he's made quite the impact here at the police department. He quite often leads our department in activity. There were a number of comments that were made about Ryan. One about his enthusiasm, smile, just if you ever have contact with him, whether you get stopped, you're going to get a ticket or not a ticket, you're going to see the smile on this guy. He's, you probably have not seen a lot of him, because since he's been here, he's found his way to graveyard shift. And so when the sun comes up, he goes away, and when the sun comes down, he checks in. And so Ryan has done an outstanding job, and I am pleased to announce him as Officer of the Year and to present him with the Officer of the Year plaque. I'd encourage him to say anything he would like to, since it's his moment.
Well, I would like to thank my wife back there for putting up for me not being at home all the time, and also my dog, that just barked, too. Also, thank you to the city for giving me the opportunity to work for this wonderful city. I love it here. The community is great, and I think my dog said it's time to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Ryan, thank you very much for your service, and to your family and your wife, thank you for sharing him with us. We appreciate it. Maybe next time, in terms of photographers go, somebody a little more subtle than Nick, creeping around behind the screen. Sorry, Chief, go ahead.
That's quite all right. So the next announcement, so as you know, the last city council meeting, we said, not really a goodbye, but good luck in your future endeavors, to Sergeant Matt Freeze, who retired. And so with that came a vacancy, and it was a difficult, well, actually, it was not a difficult decision to make, to find someone to fill his shoes. And so for now, I've appointed an acting sergeant, and I would like to call up Sergeant Christine Romo up to the podium. So at the moment, this is an acting position, but has the full rights and privileges as a full-time sergeant. And so we're going to get to a selection process, but for right now, there's a void we need to get filled, and Christie is that person to do that. She's a 17-year veteran. I have to say, I was looking at the schedule and the officers, for the exception of one officer, one sergeant, Christie will, has and will be training every, have trained every officer on the department.
Impressive.
So I'm not saying she's old or anything. She's been on for a while, but she's been here for 17 years. She's done a number of things for us. She has been our property and evidence person, which is quite the task in addition to being an officer. She's been our field training officer for how many years? Eight. Enough to train everybody in the organization, including myself. She's now the field training manager, so she stepped into Matt's shoes. That's, those are going to be large shoes to fill, but I have the almost confidence she'll do a great job. She's had a number of awards. One of them is life-saving award in the past, a number of combinations, just really too many to mix, so. But with the announcement, Calistoga has this tradition. When the last sergeant leaves and the new sergeant comes on board, that last sergeant presents sergeant's bars. And so with that, retired Sergeant Matt Freeze is joining us to present Christie with the sergeant bars that have gotten passed on for at least a couple decades, is what I'm going to guess.
Yes, Chief, I wouldn't want to out Sergeant O'Neill, but these were originally his. There's been, well, now six sergeants in the history of the city of Calistoga. I was the fifth, and Sergeant Romo will be the sixth, and the first woman. So these bars have been passed down to each sergeant, and it's going to be her responsibility to hold on to them until the next sergeant. I've held on to them for the last 12 years, and now it's your turn.
All right. Thank you.
Uh-oh.
I'll drop him, give me 20.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope that I can lead my team well and be a good mentor. I have a great team right now. We're almost full staff again, so I'm really excited to be in this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Retired Sergeant Freeze, congratulations on the opening of your new endeavor. All yours, Chief.
Last one, okay. If I can, so I have the pleasure to add another one to our force. Now, if I could ask Amanda Green to step this way, next to me. So I'm going to let her do some introductions, but I first want to say that it's a pleasure to bring Amanda Green on board as our newest officer. She actually started on February 10th, Monday, with an orientation. I think she had one full shift, so this week will be her first full shift with actually Sergeant Romo. Lucky her, she drew the prize. Amanda is originally from Southern California. Currently lives in Sonoma County for the last, since 2014. She's a graduate from the Santa Rosa Police Academy in the spring of last year, so recently graduated. I think she might have some friends here to support her, and she doesn't really want to speak, and so, but I'm going to allow her to introduce, because I believe she has some special friends and some family that I think need to be identified in the audience.
First of all, thank you so much for this. This is why I didn't want to speak. Incredibly grateful to be here. I've worked really hard, but it takes more than that, and I have an incredible support system. I mean, classmates, family, my dad's LAPD standing back there, extended family, new family, my daughter right there. I'm very, very lucky, and I'm just so excited to start a long career here. I feel so right, and I'm not sure what else to say besides that. It really sums it up. I'm lucky, and I've worked hard to be here, and I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you.
And she did a way better job than I would have done, and she was a lot more succinct than I would have been, so there you go. It's a win-win. So part of that is, although she had an official swearing-in now, there's the formal one, so that the city clerk will read her the oath. I have a badge for her to get pinned, as her badge is being ordered, so this isn't her real badge, but this is a badge that will get us through tonight, and then she'll get to choose who she would like to pin her badge on when she's finished with the oath.
I, Amanda Green, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll get you a gun later.
And I'm not going to make her say anything else.
All right.
Thank you very much, City Council.
Thank you, Officer Green. Thank you for choosing us to have your career here in Calistoga. We sincerely appreciate that. Sergeant Romo, thank you for your continued work here in Calistoga. You've done a fantastic job with all the work you've done for us, so we sincerely appreciate that. Ryan, keep up the good work. We are very fortunate, and Amanda, you are joining an incredible team of officers, dispatchers, with a lot of support from this community, and we appreciate all that you will be doing for us. Sounds like you come from a law enforcement family, so you know exactly what you're in store for. So to Dad, thanks for sharing her with us. We appreciate that very much. All right, so I'm giving you your 60-second warning. You have 60 seconds to vacate, or you stay for the entire meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Salaya also for working hard to assemble a high-quality police department here for us.
Very well said. All right, moving on, we will, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless anyone would like an item pulled.
I'd like to pull number five, please.
All right, item number five. I'll entertain a motion on item number four as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number five, consideration of amendments to Calistoga Municipal Code Chapter 15.50, Building Standards Appeals and Advisory Board. The recommended action is to consider adoption of the ordinance number 745. Councilmember Williams, you asked for this to be pulled.
Thank you. Yes, I do appreciate staff's...
Thank you. Yes, I do appreciate staffs bringing this to our attention, that there was difficulty in assembling a committee large enough to make decisions, and staff made good recommendations, which amount to shrinking the size of the committee and also to relaxing the qualifications. And I agree with both of those, and I appreciate your bringing those to our attention. As I mentioned the other day, I think term limits are important in order to increase, enhance participation of the public, and so I can't agree with the elimination of the term limit requirement which was here. And I think that the two steps we're taking, shrinking the size of the committee and relaxing qualifications, will probably, will probably provide us with enough quality input that we won't need to relax that requirement for term limits. So it's the same point I made before, that we want to maximize, maximize participation, and thereby connect the public even more to their government. So I, I agree with the first two measures, those two measures, but I can't agree with the elimination of term limits.
Okay. We've had this conversation, and I'll just share again that when you come into smaller communities, you're often challenged by the pool of people willing and capable to serve in these roles. And the more restrictions we put on, and term limits are a restriction, the more complicated it can be, but I appreciate your position. Unless there is anyone else wishing to address this matter?
Is there any other committee we have that requires term limits?
I think this is the only one.
So it seems appropriate to keep it consistent with the other standing committees?
Okay. Anyone else, councilmembers?
Did, we had a lot of applicants for this special committee?
Not in the past, which is the reason we've made some other modifications in addition to it. And we've been in a position where we've actually not been able to meet quorum or make quorum, and it's a committee that doesn't meet very frequently, so it's not as if the time burden is significant. There were some qualification requirements that we are relaxing as well.
I think they meet once or twice a year.
Yep. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, I'll close public comment. I will entertain the motion as presented.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunford. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, this is a public hearing. Continue public hearing on the draft updated infrastructure element of the Calistoga General Plan and rescission of the geothermal element. The recommended action is to receive any additional public comments on the draft infrastructure element update and provide appropriate direction to staff. As you may recall, we opened public hearing on this matter at the last city council meeting, and we continued it through today. So taking us through this will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg. Director Goldberg, welcome back.
Thank you. I don't really have anything to add. It was continued to give opportunity for additional information, input on possibly rescinding the geothermal element and folding some of the information about geothermal resources into the infrastructure element. So this was continued to give the public additional opportunity for input.
And we, one of the recommendations is that we will be obviously including the geothermal element to the infrastructure, correct?
Well, I had suggested some recommended language that could be added to address those concerns. I shared that at the last hearing. It could be folded into the infrastructure element, and that's where it was left. There wasn't any direction as to whether to go ahead and add that information and go ahead and rescind the geothermal element as a standalone or not. There was no conclusion, just a continuance for additional public input.
Okay. With that, unless councilmembers have anything to add, I'll reopen the public hearing on this. All right, is there anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Please share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, but you're not required to do so.
No problem. Diane Barrett. Excuse me, allergies. 1567 Centennial. I'll try not to repeat myself. I, as you know, through my emails and speaking last time, would really like to see a standalone geothermal element. Left in the general plan, even if it is only one or two pages, I know that staff has done a great job culling out some of the less than currently pertinent information and putting it in the general, in the infrastructure element. However, I see that as more the negative aspects of the geothermal, whereas the geothermal element can address and show the community the importance of that resource to this community. Several things that were left out that I would like to see included are the necessity and the importance of purity of the geothermal waters. Was mentioned in the current element, geothermal element, that the purity is important for bottling companies, of which we don't have three anymore. However, the spa industry depends on the purity of the geothermal water. So I think that statement and that protection is important. It's improbable that we're going to have three, let alone many more, bottling companies in town. It could be possible, however, and I have heard that the geothermal wells are going to be reactivated at Crystal Geyser. So again, the purity of that water is important to address and to let the community know that we care about that. I still believe that geothermal or the volcanic ash protection should be somewhere. It's truly not a geothermal resource, but I know nowhere else in the general plan where that can be addressed. And I might mention that at the last public hearing on this matter and tonight, if you notice, the badges of the police department, front and center, geothermal water.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this matter? Mr. Quast? Welcome back.
Michael Quast, 1300 Washington Street. I don't know if you had a chance to get my late afternoon letter or to read it. If you have, let me know so I can be more brief. But basically, I started out that it was unfortunate that the staff report two weeks ago on the 4th failed to recognize the enormous benefit of the geothermal resource, and basically highlighted its presence as a nuisance to the sewer's issue. The geothermal water users are one of the largest contingent of jobs in town. They also bring in huge amount of people that all the other businesses benefit from also. And this town is a spa town. Its creation and persona has existed for 160 years plus on the idea of being a spa town. And we are one of the largest concentration of hot springs and spas on the West Coast. I think it's important that the city council and staff should be supporting the existing geothermal users. We endeavor to be good stewards of the resource. And I think also that the geothermal water should be celebrated for their uniqueness and their continued reputation as a special spa and relaxation destination. In the past, we warranted special treatment, and I think that should continue. I think removing it is not a wise step. As with any resource, there are responsibilities and caveats, but I think with the help of staff and the city in a cooperative mode, these can be managed instead of being vilified. And I also know that you have a lot of pressure from state agencies, and that needs to be managed. And I think you have to be more proactive in that, in your lobbying and other things, because sometimes things set forth as levels don't have full scientific basis. And I think that your lobbying efforts could bring a lot of that stuff to light and help you out. As such, I appeal to the council's wisdom to recognize the importance and the benefit of the geothermal resource and to continue a geothermal element. Probably would, in my view, be best if you had a city council subcommittee meet with the geothermal users to delineate a cooperative geothermal element. But barring that, I've given you some suggestions in red. They're in the letter that I sent you.
10 seconds, Michael.
I think this is an important issue. I think that there are the aspects of, one, supporting the unique geothermal resources and the longevity, and that the city needs to be in a cooperative mode with helping and assisting the users to mitigate the adverse impacts. And I think working together is better than just going to each individual because things can be done in a cooperative method. I think also there is an atmosphere in this town of basically our spas and rural relaxation that's important to continue. And I think it, we all recognize that, and we all enjoy it. And I think that is something also to be supported, and it needs to be noted in the policies and actions.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, I do want to say the one last thing is that I think you do need to put more efforts in with being proactive on the state level, whether that requires a consultant or a better ombudsman for yourselves. But I think that that should also be another added policy and action, because I think in the long run, it'll help you be ahead of the game, because it's hard just getting told you have to do something different when it may not be, it's very gray at times.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Bruce Kendall, 1713 Lake Street. I just wanted to also just talk a little more about the geothermal from the history. Calistoga has been a geothermal town from the very beginning. It was geothermal before it was here. Geyser is an amazing place, and we have an amazing situation as far as these geothermal rock for right under us. And we've been using it for all these years as a health resort, a health spa area. And we were known for many years, I think we still are, as the hot springs of the West. So I think we should, we should continue to, as the other people have just said, to support the geothermal resource. And there's, there's ways we can do things differently to make it better, like Golden Haven right now has a reinjection system, which I think is a tremendous value, and I think we should encourage other places to look into that. We have a really close relationship, Golden Haven does now, with the state of California, and they're very pleased with how we've done things. And that's another point that some of, some of the information about the geothermal resource is not very correct. There's been a lot of talk in the past about how the geothermal water is toxic. It has all these problems. And it does have problems for a lot of plants. It is completely non-toxic for any kind of animals. And the geothermal has been running into the Napa River for thousands of years, and there's no reason why it shouldn't continue to do that. Many years ago, when we were in conversation with the state of California and the city, we had a third party, I think it was Caltest, I can't remember now, years ago, came and took geothermal water from the Golden Haven wells, and they were testing it because there was concern about it being in the river, and was it going to affect the wildlife. And they tested it at different concentrations until they had it up to 100% mineral water, and not one fish died, not one. So the fish and game at that time saw this report. They didn't like the results, so they just dismissed it. And it's this thing that I see happening sometimes, it gets off, and we're trying to protect the environment from the environment. This is a natural situation in Calistoga. It's been for hundreds of thousands of years. And I don't think we have a bad situation, maybe a good situation. So I'd like to see the geothermal resource continue, expand, and it has to be done in a way that we can, we can save it and utilize it safely. And I think there's a lot of potential for it. And I still think it's probably the number one draw to Calistoga, comfort spots. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Bruce, I have been in a meeting where the state of California referenced your facility in particular as a model of how you manage the geothermal elements. So congratulations for the work, for the work you guys have done there. Anyone else wishing to address this matter? Yes, Charlotte.
Charlotte Williams, 59 View Road. It occurs to me that I don't often hear about the geothermal being used as an alternate energy source. And yet I was at a music event in Santa Rosa a few weeks ago, and someone said, so why doesn't Calistoga make use of that? You've got solar potential there, and you've got geothermal potential. You know, why should you be reliant on PG&E or any other power company when you have a lot of potential right there in town? So I thought I'd just bring that up, and I don't know if it's addressed in the current geothermal element in the general plan, but it seems like it ought to be.
Thank you. And we have been in recent discussions from microgrid concepts that are looking into utilization of geothermal for energy production as well. Anyone else? All right, I will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Who would like to start?
So unless there's a compelling reason that we adopt this tonight, I'd be interested in allowing the public, the speakers tonight, offer their greater input, suggest changes, revisions, and, and we want to try to respond to everybody in the public. And so I'd be interested in, unless there's some reason that we just have to do this now, in getting their input and, and considering it, and going from there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with the speakers that geothermal is a very important aspect of this community, always has been, always will be. And I think it's probably worthy of an update rather than a rescission of the element in the general plan.
I did like the idea to do a suit committee and discuss this more further, so this element can be mentioned or adopted better, and listen to all the parts, and create a win-win situation. Because geothermal is, is for sure very important for this town.
So I agree with everything that's been said. I think there absolutely should be a standalone geothermal element, even if it's mostly symbolic in nature. But there are opportunities, such as energy, as Charlotte mentioned. I know we looked into using geothermal to heat the pool at one point in time, but the cost was, and it was complicated and very expensive. But technology's changed, so in the future, there might be opportunities. But my suggestion would be we should wrap up the infrastructure element and then shift the geothermal to a standalone. And I think city staff should work with the speakers to formulate a geothermal element and just bring it back. If there needs to be a subcommittee, that's fine. Seems like it's something that could happen pretty quickly, and we should not lose sight of the fact that we are a spa town.
I would echo that, and I would like to say, see the geothermal element be freestanding as a, as a separate element. And I think we have staff who understand that and agree with that. I would say, let's separate the two. Let's go ahead and move forward with the updated infrastructure element with the caveat that the freestanding geothermal element will follow, send it back to Planning Commission, allow for public hearing input. We could even consider subcommittee to enhance that element, add in some things that have changed, and then bring that back to be adopted separately. I'll make that recommendation, and then staff can tell me if that's possible. But I, I did want to key on a comment made by Mr. Quast, which I completely agree with. But I, I did want to key on a comment made by Mr. Quast, which I completely agree with, and we can, as representatives of this city, do a better job advocating the elements of geothermal at the state level, but I would strongly suggest and encourage the industry to do some of that advocacy and education locally in our own community, because I have been to some of these state meetings where locals were pressuring state agencies to come down harder on, invilifying was a word used, the geothermal industry, and that's from people who are here. So I think there needs to be some work done, some reach out to encourage people and educate folks on what this water does or does not do, because having sit, sat and watched that occur in a community where that's what you were created to do or originated from was a little bit disheartening. So I'll take some pushback to go to some of those agencies if you'll take some of that responsibility and help educate our friends and neighbors on that one. Staff, can we separate these two?
Yes, please do. Yes, I, that's, the comments are entirely appropriate, and we prepared a resolution that would allow us to close out the infrastructure element as it is without any additional language. We had multiple hearings on that, and we'll move forward with an updated geothermal, geothermal element, keeping it a standalone element. So the resolution you're receiving basically strikes out and rescinding the general plan geothermal element, and then any references to that portion throughout the resolution, and it just adds that there was a continued public hearing on February 18th and changes the adoption date to February 18th. So I would highly encourage you to, if you feel it's appropriate, to adopt the infrastructure element tonight. As noted, we've been working on this for years, and it would be great to have it closed out and moved on, and we'd be more than happy to work with the public and the stakeholders on an updated geothermal element, maintaining it as a separate element.
And what would that timeline look like on the freestanding geothermal element?
I actually have one, I actually have one drafted, but, you know, that, that could be sent out for public review, or if there is a desire to have a subcommittee, I'm not sure we necessarily need a council subcommittee. We know the stake, you know, most of the stakeholders in the, in the community, so we could show them the draft and use it as a starting point for more discussion, and we could take the suggested additions and so...
Do you have to even go through Planning Commission?
Yes, we would have to go through Planning Commission. It would be just like we did through the, for the updated infrastructure element. We would just have a separate hearing on the updated geothermal element once we have a draft that, you know, most of the folks are satisfied with.
Which I would encourage, because another public hearing allows more airing of what the modifications might be, more opportunity for people to contribute.
Right, it's not that difficult. We could just, you know, take, you know, take our time, it's not a huge rush, and, you know, take, take a few weeks to draft it and then work with everybody, and then go through Planning Commission, and they'll make a recommendation to you, so it'll come back to you eventually for adoption.
So my only concern there would be, and somebody needs to bird dog this, is if we separate them, adopt one, we want to make sure that we're still paying attention and that is working through the process and the time. I'm going to look over here now, because you'll be retired by then.
It's on the waitboard. It's on our project waitboard.
City manager, so...
I did draft it last week. It's, I'm trying to leave it all in order, so...
Okay, with that understood, is the council comfortable with just moving on the infrastructure plan with the caveat that a freestanding geothermal element will be crafted, recrafted, adopted and attached to?
I'm fine with that. I do have some comments on the infrastructure plan, but I'm fine with the separation.
Okay. Everyone else fine if we separate?
I am.
General public okay with that? All right. Questions on the element itself? Councilmember Williams?
Yes. I'm going to page 23 of 33. On the top of the, is the numbering the same on yours, Ms. Goldberg?
Possibly.
And it's also I dash 20, or page 41 of 542.
Okay. Derek, do you have that? Okay.
And at the top of the page, A 4.1 dash 3 refers to an action under the goal of pursuing the installation and monitoring of volcanic ash-mud separators at resorts and spas in order to avoid or minimize the amount of antimony discharged into the wastewater treatment system. And my question is, do you know if that's being done?
That is being done, and we are requiring it already of resorts and spas.
Great, thank you. And I have one minor word change, I think, on page 29 of 33. This is at, this is a small thing, but this is a formal document, and at the end of the very first paragraph for Calistoga, the name Calistoga has continued to invoke associations. I think we want to use evoke and not invoke.
Thank you for noting that, however, attachment to is moot at this point. We're not going to be adding this language to the infrastructure element, so...
Got it. And then my last...
But we'll make a note of that if we use it in the next one.
And my last question is on pages 14 and 21. Page 14 of 33 and page 21 of 33. And on page 14 of 33, up towards the top, item P 1.3 dash 6. If and when 95% of the capacity of the existing water storage supply distribution system has been reached, further development in Calistoga is prohibited till the city has provided sufficient new capacity to accommodate new development. So the cutoff line, the recommended cutoff line, there's 95% there regarding the water supply, and on page 21, there's the same 95% cutoff point regarding the wastewater flow. And we, we had a little bit of email correspondence there, and, and my question was how that 95% was arrived at, and I agree that it's prudent to, as the language says, prohibit further development when a certain capacity is reached either in water or sewer. And my question is, my thinking is the 95% is cutting it pretty close. We have, you know, the water supplies have been variable, unpredictable, droughts are not predictable, and if, if we're building up to 95% of our capacity of water or wastewater usage, we're cutting it pretty close, and I, it's not hard to imagine, given the variability, unpredictability of the weather, it's not hard to imagine construction being approved and having us reach that 95% threshold, and people looking at this going, what are we doing, building more and more construction of one kind or another, residential, commercial, whatever? What are we doing building that if we're this close to capacity in our water and our wastewater? And so, so I appreciate that we want to be prudent about that, and I'm thinking that something like 80 or 85% threshold, or at least down to 90% threshold, would be more prudent yet, rather than cut it so close, rather than get to that 95% capacity before we actually say, well, maybe we better stop on this, on this construction.
Director Goldberg, what was the source of the 95 figure? Is that a common practice or, Derek?
Thank you.
Common practice by other municipalities, where does that source come from?
Just generally good engineering practice.
Introduce yourself, Derek.
Derek, Public Works Director for Calistoga, sorry.
Derek.
Derek Rayner. Yeah, thank you. So yes, good engineering practice, you know, 95%, you know, to make sure that you're not over, overpromising for, you know, water and wastewater capacity in the long run.
So that is an industry marker or standard or common practice? Give me some...
I believe, I believe there's, even with the regional board, I think they do have a requirement that's a little bit before the 95, before you reach that capacity, that they will require that you start doing some studies, you start doing some engineering and some preparation in advance of hitting that 95% target.
It would seem to me they would have a specific number, because the state mandates that you grow as a town, you can't just, if you were to take that percentage and make it 30%, like that would be a way to basically stop or regulate growth, which the state doesn't allow you to do, but you obviously can't grow beyond your resources, or they come in and they mandate that you expand your capacity in one way or another.
Correct.
So it would seem to me that we should find out what that number is, and if it's lower than 95, you know, we could certainly lower it to whatever that number is.
In the past, the weather has seemed a little bit more predictable, but now we're in a different, different place, and I, I can imagine in 20 years, this may not come into play at all, of course, it's something of a theoretical question, but I can imagine 20 years from now, you know, the droughts and drought coming along, and people looking back and saying, what were they thinking, allowing the town to build up to 95% of its water or wastewater capacity? I think prudence says to go with a lower number. I think 85, but I would, you know, I would go to 90 and feel even better at 85%.
I think your, your question's a fair one, you know, what's the source of the 95? It does seem, I share the opinion, it seems pretty close to full capacity before kind of the warning flares go off. And then to Vice Mayor Dunstford's point, is there a state recommended best practice or number, because otherwise you would be dialing back your number to avoid state growth, required growth allotments? So do we have...
I believe, I believe it is 85%, but don't quote me on that. It might be a little higher than that, but, that the Regional Water Quality Control Board has for wastewater.
Okay, so if we don't have definitive, a definitive number as we sit here today, then can, is this something we can have brought back to us?
Derek, you kind of lost a little track here. You said it's 85% on wastewater, or is it 85% also on potable water?
On wastewater.
On wastewater, okay. One of the concerns I have is with the statewide housing shortage is we narrowly dodged the SB 50 bullet here a little while ago, and the people who are concerned about the housing issue in Sacramento are sure to make some additional rules that we may or may not agree with. I, I agree with, with Mike that if we put it low, that there might be a perception on some state regulator's part that we are artificially trying to, or we're trying to get around state requirement of not allocating water the way we used to. So I don't have a problem going to 90%, but I want to make sure that we're not buying ourselves a different kind of a problem with the state. So I'm okay with 90%. I'd, I'd be okay if there's a compelling reason to stay with 95%.
So for me, if we can't, until we can demonstrate a best practice or there's a marker somewhere out there, whether we say it's 95 or 90 or 85, it's no different than where we are on the 95 right now, we're guessing. So as a takeaway...
I think one thing maybe to clarify too, perhaps, is that, you know, if you're talking about, you know, mandating no development at all, that may be different than, you know, the regional board's probably going to tell us before that happens to start preparing, doing calculations, master planning, making sure that, you know, we're well-prepared to have that additional capacity in the future. They're going to be forewarning us of that ahead of the 95%.
Okay, so let's find out what that looks like and bring it back, educate us, educate the public. I mean, at this point, unless someone can demonstrate to me that there's a reason it's 95, let's, let's bring this back.
Sure. Thank you.
So councilmembers?
So are you saying let's approve this as is, and then staff will come back if there's a different number, or we're going to just...
We'd have to punt this until the next, until we have some information that clarifies or helps us set a figure that's more comfortable, or at least that is a best practice.
Well, I'm also just kind of listening to what Lynn was saying, like, let's kind of move on, like, we're done, we're kind of hung up on a specific number. Do we just agree to knock it back to 90? Staff can do the research, we can make the change if we want to in the future, but just get this off the, off our plate.
There's no rush to have to have this, is there a deadline we have to meet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Because otherwise we're going to pass a resolution with information that we're not comfortable with.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion on this item, or by consensus we can agree to move it, sorry, continue it.
Continue, continue the item.
Remand it back to staff for, okay.
Does that, that means we're continuing the public hearing as well?
Now, we'll close the public hearing, we'll remand back to staff to give us, to qualify the number, 95, share with us other best practices on which point we'll allow for public comment on that element of it.
That's fine, thank you.
Council okay with that?
I'm all right.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn, sorry about that. Moving on, item number seven under general government, consideration of a, but, but just to clarify, there will be a separation of the geothermal element as a freestanding part of this. So there. Item number seven, consideration of a contract with Anchor Point Group LLC to prepare a wildfire risk assessment and provide related services. The recommended action is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement with Anchor Point and approving a budget adjustment in an amount not to exceed $80,800, subject to any modifications to the work scope deemed appropriate by the city council. Taking us through this item will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg.
Thank you, and I'd also like to note that Fire Chief Steve Campbell is with us tonight as well. This was a joint effort among myself and Brad Cannon, the building official. So as you recall, on November 19th, when you were considering updating the building standards code to reflect the new California code, Councilmember Kraus expressed concern about the potential for a wildland fire spreading throughout the county. He expressed support for applying Building Code Chapter 7A, which is called Materials and Construction Methods for Exterior Wildfire Exposure to the entire community. And there was further discussions about whether that was legally supportable, what the construction costs could be associated with that, what the thresholds for triggering fire-resistant construction would be, potential concerns from stakeholders, the fact that Chapter 7A is tied to specific fire hazard maps that exclude much of the area within the city limits, and questions were asked about whether any other jurisdictions have taken this approach. So I'm just going to take you through a couple slides to explain how we got to this proposal for wildland risk assessment and related services from Anchor Point. So... So in the city limits of Calistoga, which is this black line around here, there is a section that is south of Foothill that is designated by CAL FIRE as being in a very high fire hazard severity zone. This other red area, this is really all red, it's just been kind of pinked out for the area that's in the city limits. So everything also south and to Sonoma County is red. There are also areas of high fire hazard area, this orange color, that's been mapped by CAL FIRE outside the city limits, as well as yellow areas, which are moderate hazard areas. So within the city limits of any jurisdiction, CAL FIRE just maps the very high fire hazard area, and we must administer Chapter seven A for any construction in that area. However, the white area with the, within the rest of the city limits, has not been evaluated in terms of high or moderate risk. And we don't really have a means at the staff level to do that. CAL FIRE does modeling for all of the other areas within the state responsibility area. They don't do the modeling for the local responsibility areas. So just briefly, Chapter seven A requires, this is all in your written staff report, I just wanted to pull a couple slides for the public. There are a number of fire-resistant things, construction items that have to be included for construction in areas that are subject to seven A, including the roofs, the gutters, the attic, and the exterior cladding of the walls, certain types of windows, certain types of doors, and decking, and stair treads, and other surfaces that are outside have to be ignition resistant or built with heavy or fire-retardant treated lumber. So there are a number of measures that are mandated by Chapter seven A in the very high hazard areas. We looked, did some research since November nineteenth, talked to some local contractors. Their best guess is that these additional fire-resistant measures increase the cost of a local project by approximately fifteen percent. However, insurance costs for buildings employing these measures could be lower. There's some suggestions that the, that the insurance costs could go down. We asked, we did, we looked around to other jurisdictions in the Bay Area. There are no local jurisdictions that are applying Chapter seven A to areas that are not designated as very high fire hazard zone, so they don't have a blanket application to throughout a city limit or certain areas of the city limit. We did talk to Santa Rosa and Sonoma County. They are not imposing the Chapter seven A measures in the rebuild areas of Coffee Park or Mark West Springs. They are not subject to seven A. They weren't subject to Chapter seven A before the fires either, because they just don't have the characteristics, topography, and wind and vegetation. Of course, we know this was an anomaly and what happened, so. We did find, I'm sorry, this should be the city of Dana Point. They did take the approach of going ahead and mapping the moderate and high severity zones within their city limits, and have designated them ember zones one and two. And then they have, they do mandate that new buildings and qualifying alterations and additions must comply with specified provisions of Chapter seven A. So there's an ember zone one, and you have that handout as part of your packet, and ember zone two, and they just kind of layer on certain things that they've sent, they pull out certain components of seven A that have to apply to construction in ember zones one and two. So you can see here the red, the orange, and the yellow zones. So something like that could also be applied in the city of Calistoga if we had that knowledge, which we do not have that knowledge, we only have the red zone knowledge. So we saw a need for a detailed evaluation. We lack the basis to require Chapter seven A provisions throughout the city. We need to identify the moderate and high zones and a more detailed evaluation of what the actual risk is. Also, there is a need for an update of the CAL FIRE mapping, which was last done in two thousand eight. The very high fire hazard severity zone within the city limits needs to be reevaluated for possibly being extended or being pulled back. So since that's more than ten-year-old data, and as we know, things have changed, that would be another thing that should be looked at. We also need to have a finer-grained approach to this information. CAL FIRE's evaluation is at a very gross level. It's, needs to be, it's like one-third of the state is subject to, subject to, is in a high severity zone. So they, they can't do it at parcel level. They, they do it in very large plots. And if we had finer-grained information, it would help us proactively address wildfire hazards, such as where vegetation might need to be removed, and it could also protect residents and property from wildfires to the extent feasible, such as requiring the fire-resistant construction in appropriate areas, and also planning for evacuation during wildfire events. So while I was researching what other jurisdictions were doing, I came across Aspen, which, under contract with a firm called Anchor Point, can, repaired something that Anchor Point calls its no-harm model. And it was an assessment of the city's wildfire, wildfire vulnerability, oh my gosh, vulnerability that is scientifically defendable, and it could be applied in a consistent manner throughout the city. They are, they have worked and are working with jurisdictions throughout the state of California, as well as outside the state, and Washington, and Colorado, and areas like that. They're based in Colorado. They're, they just finished a lot of work on the San Francisco Peninsula, a number of jurisdictions banded together and hired Anchor Point to do this evaluation for a number of jurisdictions there. So this is just all the factors that go into a fire behavior analysis. It's very technical. This whole thing is extremely technical. It's not something that staff could possibly pull off. And what is the result of this modeling is that they would come up with areas that they would anticipate to have the highest severity of wildfires, where they might be most frequent. Again, this is all dependent on vegetation, the steepness of the slope, did it burn before, what is, what are the patterns from before, and a number of other factors, also how dry or wet the vegetation is, if there are trees, or is it just grassland? So they get into a very fine detail here, and it can break down into the various neighborhoods so that the ones that, the houses that are on the periphery of a particular subdivision and that are adjacent to vegetation are more susceptible to wildfires than some towards the interior. Of course, we know about embers and that kind of thing, too. But they're also getting into, this is very interesting, looking at wind-aligned roads. So they look at the prevailing winds, and they found this to be true in Coffee Park, that winds that, streets that were perpendicular to the prevailing wind, some of the houses did better job than if you were on a street where the wind was going right down, right following that pattern. So they, it's a very complex model that they put all this data in. They can also pop out areas of vegetation, fingers of vegetation within the urban areas that could burn, and use that, the city could use it in the future for vegetation management. One of the possible corridors could be the Napa River corridor that goes through the city. That could be something we need to be looking at in terms of vegetation management, because fire could very easily traverse that corridor. So again, what we would end up with if we were to go with this kind of analysis would be areas that, like the gray areas, that probably aren't at risk under all of these various scenarios that they do, and the model can change. We would have the ability to plug in certain factors, knowing what's, what's happening out there in the real world during an event. So it would, it would drop out the areas in the middle of town, those might be subject to smoke and that kind of thing. Then as the colors get darker, the darker the pink and the darker purple, those are on the interface and the intermix areas where it might be a good idea to have fire-resistant construction in those areas, because those are going to be most susceptible. So again, they, they show here the ember zones, they, and, you know, just how susceptible areas might be towards burning. Again, a very fine-grained analysis, popping out the areas that might burn. And then they can get down to the parcel level, so you would be able to click on a parcel, and you would have a pop-up that shows exactly what zone it's in, and a whole bunch of other information. So in addition to the evaluation itself to determine the risk of the various areas of the city, Anchor Point also offers additional services. One would be a web map interface, and that could be integrated with the city and fire department websites. You could generate a neighborhood or a parcel level map along with detailed data, so that could be free to the public to access. They also do evacuation planning. They could identify primary, secondary, and tertiary routes of ingress and egress available, and make recommendations for improvements and new evacuation routes. So if we know Cordeum Canyon is a possible evacuation route, but it's blocked, or it's so, you know, in such poor shape that is really unusable, then they could make recommendations for that kind of thing. This is a sample map that they made for another jurisdiction. They highlighted the important routes, and then they even, the orange ones are ones that aren't really sanctioned roads or streets, but in an emergency, they could be used to get people out of certain areas. So they would feed all this in as well. They also have something that they call TOFO, which is Time Until Fire Arrival Modeling. This is an example, they used, the ignition point was actually in the, right in the middle of the colored area, dark red area, and they were able to project, based again on winds and fire vegetation loading and that kind of thing, how long the areas have until critical infrastructure is reached, or homes, or roads. So this would be obviously a fluid model that the various components could be plugged in there in real time. They also offer interface response plans, which are operationally focused plans for local and incoming resources during an event, so that, of course, we're going to have support coming in from all over, and this would allow us to generate these response plans that we could then pass on to the incoming resources. They would cover the fire department's entire response area. Probably a lot of people don't know that our usual response area is very large. Here's the city right here, and so it goes up to the crust up here, and up into Alexander Valley, and into Sonoma County. How many square miles is it? Ninety-two square miles. So, so the response plans could be designed to cover something that was going on in any of those areas. It's designed for field use and be a source for situational awareness for firefighters. It's a decision-making tool for incident commanders during initial attack, and also extended attack phases of suppression operations. And you can't really read this, but this would be a typical thing that would be printed out, and would be given to, this would be Unit One's assignment. It would show the location of all the roads, the hydrants, where the fire is at that particular time, and then a plan of action. And then Unit Two is down, down here, so they would also have a similar plan. So there, they estimate that would be four to five months from contract initiation to completion of the no-harm assessment, which would be in time for that fall time of year. Hopefully, we won't be getting fires, but, and then I've also broken down the various costs. The, the initial assessment would be forty thousand five hundred dollars. The web map interface would be another ten thousand eight hundred. And then presentations of the assessment findings at both the city council and at a public meeting would be six thousand dollars. Those three tasks are highly recommended. That would give us basic information we need to decide whether to apply Chapter seven A to other parts of the city, or to break it up like Dana Point, where we have certain areas that are, are, where Chapter seven A, certain parts of it would apply, and then maybe we would end up changing our very high fire hazard area as well. So then there are the optional tasks that, that I also outlined, the evacuation planning, the interface response plan, and then the total cost would be eighty thousand eight hundred. There would be an ongoing annual hosting fee for the web map interface, once it's established, of fifteen hundred dollars. The current fiscal year budget does not include designated funding for this work. It kind of came up last November. Therefore, the funding source would be general fund reserves. And this, this work would be consistent with a number of council goals and objectives for this fiscal year, mainly enhancing community disaster preparation, including wildfires, evaluate potential wildfire impacts, educate residents, and prepare for post-fire recovery, develop and adopt local fire codes that exceed county and state minimums as appropriate to protect life and property. There are some alternatives included in them. There are some alternatives included in them.